I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Seeing no one else recording this meeting, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everyone. Happy summer. Seeing no citizens. Do you girls have any comments? No? Nothing? You sure?
No, you punishing them by making them come to your home?
Yes.
We having a good summer so far? Not even a comment on that. I would seek approval of the minutes of June 5th and June 11th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 5th and June 11th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Let me now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brunel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I just want to welcome Dr. Chamberlain. This is her first official meeting as Assistant Superintendent, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here.
Nice to have you.
So the first item of business is an Auburn High field trip to Brown University. This is part of the Model UN, but where it is out of state in Rhode Island. It is my recommendation that you approve this trip.
I'll make a recommendation to approve the AHS Model UN trip to Brown University in November 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much. Very exciting news to share. I think I shared with you back probably in April or so. We were notified that there was an opportunity for a grant through the Safer Schools and Communities Local Equipment and Technology Opportunity that came from the Executive Office of Public Safety. And we had applied for just under $59,000. We were recently notified that we have been awarded $48,000. And this is to upgrade our equipment, namely our camera system and such. So we recently had a meeting with Town Manager Jacobson and Mr. Casanovaich. Mr. Coyle was there, Mr. Fahey, Mrs. Worsbicky, Mr. Marino and Mr. Bouvier, as well as Sergeant LaFlash, one of the police department. So we are working on spending that money. It needs to be spent by December 31st, but it's a great opportunity to enhance the safety in our schools, so wanted to make you aware of that.
That's great. Thanks to everyone for working on that grant.
Absolutely, thank you. So the next item, I wanted to make you aware, in your packet, there is a memo from Mrs. Worsbicky to me regarding the Special Education Stabilization Fund. So the very good news is, at the end of FY19, we were able to put in additional $25,000 into that account, making the total now $351,544. So that's great news, and it really is, you all know, and thank you for your support of that, it's for unanticipated, unbudgeted special education costs. So further on that memo, Mrs. Worsbicky has noted, and this is after meetings with Mrs. Reedy, Dr. Chamberlain and myself regarding a student who initially was planned to go for an assessment and to return to the district, but based on current needs, will be in an out-of-district placement. So we had not budgeted for this amount. It was unanticipated that this would be the situation. So we will, I am seeking your approval to spend $70,087 up to that amount. That's the amount for the tuition for the placement that the student needs. Transportation costs are already budgeted because we have another student in district who will be going there. And then with your approval, we'll then work with Town Manager Jacobson and CFO Casanovaich, because as you know, it will require Board of Selectment approval as well. And where we're limited in what we can share, even as I'm sharing just generalities with you, with the Board of Selectmen, so we have to work out that plan. But the good news is, there's more than ample funds in there to take care of this. And then should the student still require, and we hope it won't be the case, in FY21, then what we would need to do is we need to budget for that. So it's only a one-time thing you could do for this purpose.
Excellent. Any comments, questions?
Through the chair is the thought that hopefully by next year, this kid can come back into the district.
That's the hope. And in fact, in discussions that we've been having just over the past week or so, Dr. Chamberlain and Mrs. Reedy are working with, it's called the Bright Program, to potentially beef up some programming that we have in district. It's always our goal to create programming that can not only support students who have some additional needs beyond the social workers that we've just added to and the other support staff that we have, but to prevent them from going out, but even when they go out to get a grab. So that's certainly the goal. Yes, absolutely.
And this is not residential. This is just day. That's why this transportation.
This is just a day placement. Exactly, yes. Yes.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the withdrawal of funds from the SPED Stabilization Fund to cover the cost of student 2021's placement out of the district.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, I have one question. When would that go before the Board of Selectmen?
So I believe they have a meeting on August 12th. So what we do is, I would anticipate that tomorrow, we would reach out to Julie and Ed, let them know about this and give them specifics around it. And whether we are, Mrs. Worsbicky had reached out to colleagues to see, you know, how are districts doing this? Is there a form that they're creating to send to the Board of Selectmen for their approval? So where this is our first time, we just haven't created the process, but I do know that they're meeting on the 12th, so hopefully we'd bring it before them.
Okay.
And regardless, we're obligated to pay this. It's just whether it's going to come out of the special stabilization or we'd have to shift things from our own budget.
Which we could then move around to.
Afterwards. Exactly.
Without permission or with permission?
Without permission, we can move things around, definitely. But we, in order to take it out of the special stabilization, it's that two approval process, school committee and Board of Selectmen, so. And I anticipate that we would get their support on that, very honestly, for that, because it's set for that purpose.
Yeah.
I would assume so. And they are aware that this is kind of anonymous information that we're sharing.
Correct. Yes.
I know that Ed and Julie are familiar with that, but so that we don't get into any lengthy discussions, I'm going to draw out the name.
Agreed.
Or the exact situation of the students.
Agreed. Agreed.
This is a perfect example of why we needed that fund, because things happen after we've done the budget.
Right.
And just another procedural question. I don't know if you even recall, but maybe we could look it up after. And it's probably not anything that we have to worry about, because I'm sure, as you said, we'll have full support of that board. But does that call for a unanimous vote, or is the majority vote?
Majority vote. Yeah, so it's just a majority vote from both boards.
Okay. And again, not that I ever foresee any issues with that, which is out of curiosity.
Yep.
I don't recall.
I'm sorry, one more question. You mentioned we could only use it once.
For this particular child.
Oh, okay.
Because the unanticipated part, you know, that if, say, it's determined that any child needs to stay in a placement, once we're aware of it, we have to build it into our budget for the following year. So it's only a one-time for any one particular student. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next memo in your packet is from Mr. Bouvier regarding, and these come annually forward for some request to have you deem obsolete a number of technology-related equipment. He has, as noted in here, checked to see if the high school tech department has any need for it. We certainly will offer it to the town, certainly as well. But then what we would do is then coordinate with a recycling company and that way it is disposed of in an environmentally appropriate fashion.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to deem the above-named equipment obsolete for disposal purposes?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question. Do you know if AYFS was asked if they needed any of the equipment?
So typically what we do when we check with the town, they are included as part of that, but I will make a note and make certain that that's the case, for sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Can we now move on to unfinished business?
So the next item, Mrs. Worsbicky and Mr. Fahey attended the Development Coordinating Group, the DCG meeting, which is a town-based group, to discuss the Eastland Housing Project or the reserve at Ashworth Hill. So what they noted in that, and is detailed in Mrs. Worsbicky and Mr. Fahey's memo, they had increased the size of this project by 25%. Originally, it was anticipated it would be 250 units. They are now anticipating 320 rental homes, which would include 32 three-bedrooms, 162 bedrooms, and 128 one-bedroom units. So as noted in that memo to us, where they were originally thinking the impact would be 56 school-aged children, and this is across the grades at complete build-out, they are now anticipating that it could be up to 67. And that was really an average of two different methodologies that they used for this. I would share with you, and we have submitted the documents to NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council, for us to actually get an enrollment projection that includes this information and in correspondence with them. We've sent all this updated data to them. They're going to actually wait to get our October 1st counts in the fall and then make a prediction, their enrollment prediction, which we will have. And Eastland has asked us to share it with them as well. But as Town Manager Jacobson has said, the town is really working with Eastland so that this is a friendly process. And we are actually going to be looking at, the school department's been invited into that discussion because Eastland wants to do some projects of monetary value that would mitigate, or I guess be in support of them coming here. So it's just in the discussion phases now as to what that might look like. It could be them purchasing something off of a CIP, school or town-related, to do it a little bit sooner. In other communities, they've sometimes put in parks, ballparks and things like that. So it's in the discussion phases, but wanted you to know that the project has changed by about 25%, so.
And is there talk of when this is going to start?
They've already started, I think.
Yeah, and in the PowerPoint, I don't remember. Do you remember when it's?
They were looking at starting the duplex houses, but maybe at the beginning of 2020?
Yeah, I think it's not until so. They're hopeful. They've still need to go before the Board of Selectmen again. They've got approvals that they still need to gather. So I think it's going to be in winter, early spring of 2020 that they're going to be starting the project.
I noticed, yeah, there's been some earth movement there, but.
Through the chair, what's the reason for the increase? Do we know?
What they had noted was that it was financially better for them to do the 320-unit project, I think that to try and build out what they had purchased as opposed to going with the smaller.
And has the larger number been approved by the Board of Selectmen as this?
I don't believe at this point, I believe that they go back to the Board of Selectmen. I'm not sure if it's an August meeting or early September, that they need to go back before them. So it's, I'm not even sure that they have all planning board approvals.
They have to get planning board and zoning board approvals, so they're waiting on this.
Through the chair, actually, I'm more curious about whether or not we're privy to the initial discussions of what they're planning to bring to the tables. You know, if those are going to be televised, or if they're going to be in a public forum where people can not participate but just listen, because I think, you know, we would probably all feel more comfortable to even just hearing their take on them, so.
Sure. So in terms of, you know, that monies that they wanted to help support? So I'm not sure, I would assume at some point it's going to be public, but let us check and get back to you. I know that the email communication was sent out to most of the department heads and including the schools in that, to say that they want us to come up and generate a list of things that would go before Eastland for their consideration. So whether that would require a Board of Selectmen approval, I'm not sure, but we can get that information and get that back to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we probably have until 2021 before this would affect the schools?
Through the chair, it would appear that way, you know, at the earliest, I think, you know. And it's going to depend, I mean, the likelihood if they start with the one-bedroom units, I think the impact of those is going to be negligible, you know. So I think it's going to depend on the phasing. And I'm not sure if they have that information yet. But I will say, you know, as is the case with all of the projects that are open in the town, Julie and Ed have done and continue to do a nice job to make sure that we are kept abreast of any changes that are happening and things. So we'll continue to watch it and learn. But I do know they're going before the board, still.
I'll find out when that date is, because it's something I'd probably want to be present for. I mean, my question is, if we're increasing it, I mean, I know at the last time this was brought up, my concern was the schools, especially the elementary schools are kind of busting at the seams. So to add those schools in, those additional kids in, is going to take away from the kids in there already. Is this increase of 25% something that we as a town have to do? I know the project is coming. It's coming. We don't really have a choice. But can we give more pushback to this increase of 25% versus less? And I know that's not something as a school committee, but definitely at the selectmen level, we could probably have more of a say.
I'm sure that they're being advised not to push back too much. It's just one of those situations where when you push back, and their pushback could be a lot worse. Legally, they have the upper hand, when I've seen these projects take off before.
Right, and I know at the lower, you know, we're bringing it in, but can we bring it in at that lower number versus the higher number? Because that's another classroom or so of kids that we're talking about. I don't know.
Well, ideally, if whatever they're offering up could be put in some sort of a fund, that would be better than something that we may or may not need in five years. Let's say a playground, which we seem to be doing pretty well with, as well as athletic fields. If there was some way, I don't know, that it's even legally possible, but to put some money in a fund, so we need to build that modular unit, or we need to put in a sprinkling system somewhere, that will have that money. And that could be something where there may be some sort of a discussion, may not be from us. It may be through town leadership, but. Well, I don't even know that it's a possibility, but ideally, that's where we could use the money, should we need to expand.
I agree. I mean, we are bursting at seams.
Yeah.
I know we do have, we do have the bubbles and, you know, we scale back, but it's just going to take a couple more successive bubbles, you know, because we know town, we know that houses in town turn around like that now. Everybody's turning, especially in the summer, so just want to make sure we're prepared.
Well, they won't turn around as quickly if we have 32 students in a classroom. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none.
Great, and why don't you update you on the AED project? And actually, just today, we received another donation, and I'm going to ask it at your seat. This from TM Solution, which is Andy Parquet and his wife, that they have donated also $2,500 to the purchase of the AED, an AED as part of this project. But the other piece of great news, and we do not have final approval on this yet, that it was added in, as noted in the memo, $15,000 was allocated in the state budget for the purchase and install of automated external defibrillators at athletic fields, playgrounds, and tunnel facilities in Auburn. So I have to thank Senator Moore and Representative Frost for their tremendous and ongoing support. So should that come to fruition, I will certainly send them a letter of thanks and notify you too.
That's great. Yes, please thank them and thank all involved with this initiative. When it first took off, I had no idea that it would take off this quickly and everyone would be so involved. The schools and town in general, much safer place. Okay. I would entertain a motion. Do we have that? A motion to accept with gratitude the donation from TM Solution Incorporated, Andy Parquet's business, for $2,500 to purchase an AED for the AED initiative?
I'll make that motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, it's just wonderful they're doing that.
He does a lot for the district. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So the next item, we are seeking your approval to create, later in the packet, we have a job description, a position of a transition coordinator slash job coach. As noted in the memo from Mrs. Reedy regarding the need for this. As you'll recall, when the Department of Ed came out and did its compliance review, one of the things, and as I noted in my memo here, it really is a push that they're making across districts, across the Commonwealth, to really provide transition planning, activities, assessments and such for students prior to them graduating high school. Now, in many cases, it is students with special needs, but doesn't necessarily have to be. It's really for, but a targeted population. It wouldn't be for every student that would need this. Most get all the support they need through the guidance department in college and workforce things. But we believe having this position in place, and it would be cost-neutral, because as we looked at our budget planning, so our job coach retired, so we have those funds available. And then based on extremely low caseloads at the primary schools for five students only each as compared to 14 and 15 at some of our other schools, we have the monies in there to do this. So there's no financial impact, but we do seek your support to do this. So we think it's going to have great benefit. We'd look to do this as a pilot for this school year, and then assess it and come back to you. But the state is certainly making a push in this direction.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the creation of a transition coordinator slash job coach at Auburn High School?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
So would this be a new hire, or would one of our special education personnel probably move into this position?
So through the chair, we are anticipating that it would be someone already on staff, so who would go into this position. So it wouldn't be loss of any staff. It would be someone on staff already.
Okay.
And someone who has been working with this population of students. We've outreach and said, you know, pending school committee approval, to give this consideration. And this individual is very excited, and I've reached out to the AEA as well to let them know of this, and that we would be doing it as a pilot, and they are in support as well.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments?
Through the chair, I just think this is a really great bonus for the school system, and I absolutely appreciate the creativity that must have taken to have this be financially neutral. In fact, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thanks to those who were actually doing this job before. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much. I wanted to make you aware of a change recently at the Southern West County Educational Collaborative. The former director, Elizabeth Fitzmaurice, has resigned. She's moving on to another position, and we wish her well. But I am pleased to share, it came rather late, that Alan Himmelberger, he's a retired superintendent from Oxford in Blackstone Millville, or he retired out of Blackstone Millville. He's been hired to serve as the interim executive director for the upcoming school year and actually just started last week and is very excited. So we expect it will be a positive year.
Great.
And then finally, just some upcoming events. You know that summer, we still have plenty of weeks left, but we're looking ahead at open houses and such that, you know, we're about to get back into high gear, so. But it's been a good summer so far. Very, very busy. Very good, but good.
Okay, let's not talk about this. Mr. Handfield already did that through the way on social media. Can we now move on to teaching and learning? Dr. Chamberlain?
Good evening. First, I just want to say thank you for your support in my assuming this position. I can't tell you how happy I am and honored to be here. And so far, I think it's been a great summer, kind of finding my way through what needs to be done. Dr. Lozay gave great support in the transition, so that's much appreciated. And certainly, Dr. Brunel's been great as I have come in, so so far, so good. So we'll start with a couple of things that will be upcoming, including one that's very important, new teacher orientation, right? We want to bring our new folks in in the right way, and we're always excited to welcome our new staff. The new teacher breakfast and orientation will take place on August 20th. The mentoring team has been working on that already. They've all been assigned a mentor as closely aligned to their job alike as we can possibly support. And so on that day, they'll get to meet their mentor, they'll be introduced to the community, they'll meet some of the leadership team, the principals are all there to meet them. And so that's really exciting. And we are gaining information from our mentoring program about the topics they cover and what they work on, so we can make sure that those mentees really receive all the information they need to get off to a good start, whether it be through their mentor, through their building principal, or through their grade-level team, or whatever that might be. So we're working on that. It will include a bus tour of all the buildings, including a couple of stops for some work with Mr. Bouvier and Mrs. Reedy to kind of get them into the buildings, and that's always a treat. Usually, they get little goodies as they go by each building, so that's always a fun thing. And I'll get to ride on a school bus this year, so that's a good thing too. So again, in collaboration with Dr. Brunel, we're getting ready to welcome staff on August 26th. That'll kind of be our kickoff day. This year, we're hoping to maybe mix things up a little bit and perhaps do some recognition of our, the staff that we really appreciate that have been here for some time, and kind of get that little team spirit going at the start of the year, maybe with a little student input too, but we'll keep you posted and leave you hanging on what that might include.
If I could interrupt, how many new people are we talking about?
I would say approximately, and this is approximate, maybe 15 across the district? Maybe 12, 12 or 15 around there?
Across all grade levels.
Across all grade levels, yeah. And you know, it takes teamwork, right? So that's really, we want to acknowledge that and start the year off that way. And we do have a lot to be proud of, so I think that's a good positive way to start the year. August 27th is designated as a professional development day, so I'm working diligently to make sure that each and every type of position that we have has quality professional development for that day happening to make it meaningful. And it's going to be here before we know it, so. But it's really exciting things, and you know, it's funny, people all think, right, teachers all take the summers off. I can't tell you how many have been in and working and the curriculum work that happened over the summer. So it's really exciting and I'm anxious to get started with a new school year.
Any questions or comments? Yes?
Through the chair, I just have to say, we're thrilled to have you, and you are luminous. You are glowing. I'm seeing that you're really happy to be in the position, so, you know. We say this to you, I know you've heard us say this when you're in the principal position, but if there's anything that we can do to support you, please, please don't hesitate.
Thank you so much. You've always been very supportive. And I will tell you, as a former member of the principals team, we really appreciated the support that we got from all of you consistently, because it certainly does help to make our jobs easier and the jobs of the teachers. So it's been great, so.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I just had one question, and either you or Dr. Brunel can answer, and I don't know why I've never asked it before, but out of curiosity. Just tell us a little bit about the mentoring program, how that's structured, and what kind of accountability or follow-up or paperwork is involved with that.
Yeah, so I know a good bit about it. So we do have a team of members from each of the, each of the levels within the school district that kind of lead the mentoring program. So there's some high school, middle school, intermediate and elementary school representatives who are kind of the team, the mentor leaders. And so they coordinate the program that really runs a range of topics. Educator evaluation, how do you access your mentor? How do you arrange visits or observations with your mentor? And for all of those things, there is a very precise kind of documentation to make sure that there are so many observations that happen. There are so many meetings outside the school day that happen. And all of that is documented and monitored by that team, as well as, you know, in the past, it's been Dr. Lozay, but by me as well. I will say, I have already reached out to them to make sure that there is a nice breadth of topics that are covered when they have there, because they do have regular meetings as a group, right? So all the mentors, mentees, and the leaders come together. And there's a, might be a specific topic that they discuss. I really want to go through and review all of those with them to make sure that as things have changed, we've changed with them as well so that we're best supporting those new teachers. Because as we know, new teachers are the ones that can really struggle the most, right? It's a daunting job to take on. So I want to review with them to make sure that it is a comprehensive kind of thing, that topics are covered so that it's a good transition for everyone we bring aboard.
Nice. I like that idea of them meeting as a group.
Yes.
That's excellent.
Yeah, so it's a variety of ways, right? Sometimes it's just with their mentor, sometimes it's with the whole group, sometimes there are observation times, so.
And they take part in mentor training before they become mentors?
Yes, they do. Yes, they have to before they can be a mentor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through the chair, how many mentors per school are there?
It really varies. It really varies. But we've not, to my knowledge, ever run into a situation where we've not had. a situation where we've not had an available mentor for someone.
And does the mentorship go all year for the first year?
Yes.
Okay.
And that it actually somewhat carries into the second year, but in a more casual way. So the mentor is expected to still provide support should something come up in year two. But there aren't all the formal meetings that take place over the first year.
And did we adopt this whole theory or system through other schools, or is this something that you guys kind of came up with?
So the Department of Ed expects that there be mentors in place for them. We actually use some grant funds and some operating funds, but I think it's just a great practice, you know, for, we all remember that first year coming in, and, you know, regardless of all of the training that you've had, it's different when you assume you've done your student teaching, all your practical work, but when the 24 students before you are yours all day, there's a lot of things, even like little things like, how do I request, you know, to go to a conference and things, you know, just getting acclimated. So the mentors do a great job. And I know that Beth will do an outstanding job in working with them. And the mentor leaders that we have, most of them have been in place for a number of years. And they've really, I mean, they're very invested in making sure that our new teachers really feel supported and stay. Because I can't quote you this statistics, but the number of teachers who leave within their first three years of their own choosing, that they just decided it's not for them, it's pretty great. It's pretty great. So, but we don't have that issue at all.
I would think socially, too. The teachers get to know other teachers and they break into the social scene here.
And the mentor leaders, they have to apply for that position each year as well. So it shows that they're invested in supporting the new staff that are coming on, you know, and they really do a great job.
It's funny, I called my mentor five years after I started teaching still. You know, it's just one of those things. And when I just left my last position to start at a new college, I called her up and thanked her, you know, eight years later.
Yeah.
Something you need in those first few years.
That was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good chat.
Hey, first one. One down.
Now we move on to everyone's favorite time of the evening, financial.
Good evening, everybody. In your packets, for information purposes, I've included the omnibus transfers, number two, number three, and four, which were completed to close out friskly year 2019. And I'd have you to answer any questions, but if none. With that being said, it brings me to my next memos. The first being a request to CFO Casnovitz to carry forward a balance of $58,649.66 to be used in FY '20. This is for the FY '19 timesheets that were paid out after June 30th, which were for work that was completed prior to June 30th, as well as purchases which were encumbered, but the items might not have been received yet, or we don't have invoices in hand and everything needs to be closed out by the end of the year. So these orders will be paid out in the next few months, and the timesheets will be journaled out once the year is officially closed by the town. So we're officially closed on our books, but we're waiting for the town to close everything up. So we'll carry forward that $58,000 plus. There are also two memos to Casnovitz, CFO Casnovitz, I apologize, which request to have previous year articles, the articles from FY '19, as well as the articles that were in FY '20 to be carried forward, which include the special needs article and the Medicaid from previous year and current year, as well as the two articles that were on board for Packer Chuck in Swanson, which Mr. Fahy's, they're currently encumbered, and that's, the work is in progress. So once these projects are completed, those monies will be paid out. But I need to bring the monies forward to be paid in '20. Any questions on any of those?
So this is just formalities to...
Right. Just to make sure that the monies get moved forward, because if I didn't request them, the monies would go back to the general fund. So we want to make sure that the monies get carried forward for school use.
Thank you.
And then after meeting with Dr. Brunel and Mr. Fahy, I put together a document for your perusal outlining our current capital projects, which states the original budgets and the description of what they're to be used for. We currently have many projects online for the summer, and Mr. Fahy is going to be here on September 18th to provide you with updates.
Okay.
So I hope he's looking forward to that. So, and if you don't have any questions or any questions on that at all?
None.
And then finally, Mrs. Janice King, our food service director, has prepared a memo for your information with regard to the mass school buying group bids for 2019 and '20. On Mrs. King's behalf, I'd like to seek your acceptance of the grocery and frozen bids to Thurston Foods for a one-year period of time. Now, the collaborative group has accepted it for two years, but Mrs. King feels like it's in the best interest of Auburn to only look at accepting it for one year. She was a little concerned with the increase in pricing, and she'd like to continue to review pricing with the bids to take a look at that. So if you can accept that, that would be great.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the grocery and frozen foods bids to Thurston Foods for one year only, FY '20 '20?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Elizabeth.
Well, that concludes my report. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent, as always. And we now move on to personnel.
So as mentioned previously, in your packet is a job description for the transition coordinator slash job coach. I want to thank Mrs. Reedy and Mr. Handfield, who were both instrumental in putting this document together. And it is my recommendation that you approve as fit.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the job description for the new position of transition coordinator and job coach as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, did you have something?
It's just a follow-up request. Through the chair, I would like at some point, maybe halfway through the year, just, could we just get an update from the person in the position, just to see how they think it's going, see if we think in the future we'll need more than one position, or, I mean, it would just be good for us to be more familiar with what that's doing.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Elizabeth. And we do need an executive session?
Yes.
So I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for Mass General Lodge after 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Elizabeth. Good night, everyone.